I move to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the Mark Breitberry reservation from the planning board and the updating the that's spread by Mr. Jensen.
I have a second.
All second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four oh. Moving on to communication section, Kechai civic groups or committees? Do we have any civic groups or committees here seeking? All right, seeing none. Move on to Kechai good news. Does council out have any Kechai good news before I get them? Do you want us to talk about your kids again?
Well, I don't know if I'm kicking a dead horse here, but I I guess I would just say if you're going to the Kechai garage sale, uh my living room is a complete disaster, but uh there are plenty of snacks and a lot of prizes and things like that. Uh even handouts for uh discounts at places, so swing by, say hi, have a hot dog, and if you feel like it, donate to a great cause. And that's all I'm saying.
Well, I'll highlight a little more for you. Um it's the fifth time in a row, fifth year in a row, and it's for what you're talking about, well, actually, and you're hosting a wrap, all right, and a donation drive and a fundraiser lunch. So he's very busy, but come see him on Saturday. Um and thank you for, you know, raising such great kids and our community and, you know, helping out where you guys can.
Thank you. And I'd like to add one more thing. Thank you to Matt Jensen for uh loaning some tables that were much needed. I cannot tell you what came through, and that is a beautiful thing, so thank you.
All right. Um any other Kechai good news? All right. I just want to say the next project uh project is progressing and it's looking great. I know that the city posted some pictures about all the sidewalks being out now and getting ready to do all the more work down there, but I was really curious to see, you know, with the rain and everything, if they've been able to progress and uh keep up.
Yeah, they're moving right along. They were putting rock down to the final grade today. Once they have that rock down, then they will start on the curb and gutter portion of it. Once they have that done, then they will start on the asphalt. So their message to us, Todd was in that meeting, is once the sanitary or the storm sewer was complete, things would start progressing very rapidly, and they have. It's looking good.
Well, I wanted Chris to be in here because, oh, there she is. Bye, Chris. Uh I want to give her a huge shout out. She's the one who helped really put together the map for the city garage sale this week. Debbie helped too, so did Kendra and myself. Uh but Chris was really the one who put it, put everybody on there. We greatly appreciate you, Chris, and um all city staff for everything that you do to make the city run and help. So thank you so much for that. All right, that's the end of my Kechai good news. Um moving on to public comments. Debbie, do we have anyone set up side up? Okay, we will go ahead and close public comment and move on to new business. Item A, IRB public hearing, five one three Properties LLC.
Mayor and council, the first part of this agenda item is a public hearing. Back in April, the council approved a resolution of intent to issue IRBs industrial revenue bonds for five one three properties. It is a company that's going into the industrial part. We've been through the process, given proper notice through the newspaper and to other entities that need to be notified. And this is just the final part, finalize that IRB process. So the first portion of this is a public hearing for anybody who wants to make comments.
Do we have any, do we have no one set up for public comment? All right, we will.
Mayor.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I'm, if you look at your agenda item there towards the bottom, uh you need to open the public hearing.
Sorry. I open the public hearing. We are now o, we now open a public hearing regarding the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds and an accompanying property tax abatement for the purchasing, acquiring, and construction and equipping a commercial facility in Kechai Business Park for one five three Properties LLC. Anyone from the public who wish, who desires to per, to present their views on this topic is invited to speak. Close the, close the public forum. And we'll now move on to item uh seven B, IRB resolution twenty five dash seven eight four dash five one three Properties LLC.
Mayor and council, just like I explained, this is the final part of the IRB process. You've been through it before. Everybody should be familiar with it. We do have Cory and Jennifer here who are the owners of the property and the business. If you have any questions for them, I'm sure they would be happy to answer anything for you. Otherwise, nothing further from staff.
Council, any questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty five dash seven eight four relating to add five one property tax abatement in connection with not to exceed one point eight million taxable industrial revenue bonds for five one three properties LLC and authorize the mayor to sign.
And second?
I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four oh. Moving on to old business water rate recommendation.
Mayor and council, we are coming back to you with the recommended water rates from two council meetings ago. If you remember at the last meeting, we had intended to present these. However, we did not have the information backed from our consultant that we hired to provide these rates. I'll just kind of give you a little recap of why we're here. So just a little, little review. The last rate adjustment was in two thousand and sixteen. The rate analysis that was done and presented in two thousand and twenty one recommended both a water and sewer rate adjustment. And if you remember at that time, water rates were not adjusted, the sewer rates were adjusted. So because of that, there have been no adjustments to the, the water rates, and we are, for lack of a better word, in a desperate situation, getting ready to go into the red because those rates have not been adjusted. So that is why we went back to our consultant, had him do a supplemental study to this, brought it back to council. We've had several discussions over it. At one of the last meetings, you had asked staff to bring back a couple of other options for you, specifically to add a fourth tier to the three tier system. And that fourth tier on the residential rates would be a zero to five thousand gallon tier. And our objective was to see if we could reduce the rates a little bit, and I'll give you that here in just a minute. So, like I said, without the adjustments, the water utility has become insolvent. This is because of wholesale increases, inflation, and just the cost, certainly the cost of new business. And this, these adjustments will write the water fund and put us back where we need to be on track to make that a self-sustaining fund. And if no adjustments are made, we will then need to start supplementing the water utility with property taxes, and no city ever wants to do that with any utility. So our current water rates, we'll just review these real quick. The residential meters, there is a base rate charge of twenty two dollars. The commercial meters, which is usually a two inch meter, is eighty seven thirty. And then under the old tier system, it was a three tier system, one thousand to ten thousand gallons. You pay seven thirty three per unit. This is the average use range that most people fall into. The average use for a customer is between three and four thousand gallons. So just remember that when we go to the next slide here. Ten to fifteen was eight seventy three, and fifteen thousand gallons plus is ten sixty eight. So based off discussion with the council and from staff, we went back to our consultant. He helped us redo some of these figures, and these are the uses of the tier system that we came up with. Just like before, was presented a couple meetings ago, the base rate for a one inch residential meter would increase from twenty two dollars to twenty eight sixty. This would be an increase of six dollars and sixty cents a month. If you see, we now have a four tier system, and what I had just spoke to you about was the average usage is between three and four thousand ga, three and four thousand gallons for an average residential user. So we created this zero to five thousand gallon tier. And before, the price on that would have been nine thirty, we were able to get that down to eight dollars and seventy five cents, which I believe meets the council's objective of providing a lesser rate for people who are more on a fixed income, single family homes, uh homes who may just have one person, be it a widow or widower, uh people who have very low usage, and people who choose to conserve their water. So from that zero to five thousand gallons, it then jumps up to five, five thousand and one, to ten thousand, which would be ten ninety five per unit. Ten thousand to twenty five thousand uh would be sixteen forty five, and then twenty five thousand plus would be twenty four sixty seven. And these are all for residential customers. There's been an increase in the usage range from ten to fifteen to ten to twenty five, and then over twenty five thousand gallons. I can tell you, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, rarely do we have anybody who uses more than fifteen thousand dol, fifteen thousand gallons on a residential account. There are times when they do.
Not on a regular basis.
But not on a regular basis, so. So as explained at the last council meeting, when we did these rate adjustments, we realized by putting figures together that it was going to significantly impact our commercial customers to the tune of fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month in their water bills. That would be an increase, and that is not sustainable, and not anything we would want to do as a city to any of our customers is to have an increase like that. So working with our consultant, we asked him to develop some commercial water rates for us. And essentially what that does is creates a three tier system, and the usage rate is the same as residential. The usage amount is just higher. So you go from zero to five thousand gallons, or five to ten thousand gallons, to zero to a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, and two hundred and fifty thousand plus. Now, when we looked at that, our base rates for commercial were astronomically high, much, much higher than our surrounding cities. So those base rates have been brought down on the commercial accounts for the base rate each month. With these new rates, we will still be solvent. We have very few industrial commercial users at this time. So these commercial rates really have very little impact to the overall water utility. Okay, any questions from council? So tonight, we're not asking you to make a decision. We're just here to answer any questions that you might have, uh provide any additional information, bring back any additional information for you. Uh and what we would like is just kind of go ahead to move forward with this. We will then bring it back to our city attorneys, and they will draft the ordinance which we would bring back to the next meeting for this. And at the next meeting, you would make the decision to approve that ordinance.
Any questions, council?
I appreciate you doing the extra work and and having him update those rates.
Yes, I know Karen is not here tonight. Her and I had a very in-depth conversation about it as well, and I know the others of you, we talked about this uh just one on one, too, kind of going over different options and different scenarios and usage rates. And I, I think what we've developed, even though it's an increase, I think it's very fair, it's very conservative, and it'll get us where we need to be. And I think an important thing that comes from the consultant's study that he did, and follow me when I say this because it's kind of hard to understand, but even though power, even though Kechai's water rates are higher than some of our neighbors, our income per capita makes them more affordable than our neighbors. So some of our neighboring cities have a lower income per capita, which makes it harder for them to afford some of those higher utility bills. Kechai has a higher income per capita, so they are better able to afford the prices that we have. So even though they're a little higher, they're more affordable. Kind of hard to make sense of that, but uh it's a good point.
Any other questions, council? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to council reports. Does any other council member have a report?
All right, I'll get mine. Uh on six ten, I attended the uh state legislative appreciation dinner. I had the opportunity to speak with many legislators with uh from around the state and build some great relationships, um and continue some great relationships. It was an incredible opportunity for Kechai and REIT. Um today, I attended and spoke at the REIT slash Sausonville uh Kansas delegation uh meeting. And we got to tour the uh new, I say new osteopathic um health college, um and.
Osteopathic school of medicine.
Yeah.
And I know that because my daughter attends there, so.
It was very. Yes. Um REIT hosted an event there to be able to uh show off, show off all the great work that they're doing and talk about the partnership that they will have with uh Ki, the KD Biomed Center. Uh we had some great networking opportunities, got to go through some really cool uh virtual imaging um with some skeletons and stuff and see a lot of different um parts of the campus, and so I really appreciated being able to go and be a part of that. Items I worked on, all the same stuff, but I added uh attending community meetings and it um sending checks, all of the other things. And tomorrow night, I will attend the uh Movies in the Park with the police department, so we're excited about that. And um the Arts Council is doing Chock It Up. Um do you want to talk about any of that?
Oh, sure. Um I'll be there to bring some chalk from the Arts Council, and I'll be setting sidewalk games and stuff for the kids to do while they're waiting to watch the movie, so.
Um announcements, I guess. Uh Movies in the Park, obviously, it's tomorrow night uh on June thirteenth. The movie is Scoob, correct?
That's what I heard.
Okay, just making sure it hadn't changed since before then. So Scoob will be playing. About what time is that? Do you have a first?
About probably seven forty. Well, we'll probably start starting around seven forty five, and then whenever it gets dark enough to see the movie.
Okay, so about seven forty five start time, but obviously come early for some of the Chock It Up events. We'd love to have you. Uh Brush Dump Day is on the fourteenth, so that the Saturday from eight to noon at the park on South Anderson. The Kechai City Hawaii Garage Sales are also on June fourteenth. The uh maps are up here at City Hall, also um many places around town. One of our great uh fair committee members did take them around town so we could grab them elsewhere. And that's all I have. Moving on to staff reports.
We don't have staff reports.
Uh I, before we go into executive session, I do have one question for staff. Um I know we've had um some weird planning commission meetings where we've had to have some special meetings. Can you kind of give me some background on why we're holding special meetings or not recessing, or what, what's going on?
Yeah, specifically, uh the last two meetings, there has been time-sensitive agenda items that have been on there. And when items are tabled for another meeting, it's holding up commerce. There, the first meeting, there was a multimillion dollar business transaction that was waiting on a decision to be made and forwarded to the city council for a final decision prior to then moving forward. On this one, there was a financial transaction that was also waiting to go through that needed to be done, needs to be done by the end of the month. Again, another time-sensitive issue. When those items are tabled and no recommendation, either yes or no, is forwarded to the council, it, it puts a hiccup in everything, and it's not fair to those developers or people who are waiting on those funds to um hold it over another month and possibly, where they could possibly lose those funds that they have or mess up a business transaction, so.
Thank you for answering my question. Appreciate it. All right, and so no staff reports. We'll move on to the executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move we go into executive session. The subject to be discussed during the executive session is attorney and client privilege. The justification for closing the meeting in discussions relating to attorney-client privilege matters. And the time and time and place for the open meeting shall resume is seven thirty five. In the council chamber.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
As we return to regular meeting, I want to remind everyone that pursuant to Kansas Open Meeting statutes, no binding action was taken by the city council on executive session. Um, so we're adding something really quick. We do have a civic group who would like to, uh, speak. And whoever would like to come up and speak on behalf of the park board, more than welcome to come up and check.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, uh, movie at the park, we are planning the park board to be there so the residents can meet us, they can kind of give us their wish list, and then we can start going from there. So just come by and meet us and give us your ideas.
Are you going to have a little area set up to identify you?
I think over there by the pavilion, I think they're planning on setting up a table and have some poster boards that people can write on.
Don't you have another event coming up too? I'm sorry, on the twenty-first, so.
Yes, Friday morning. Do I have a cleanup?
Yes, okay, so the Ketchikan Park Board also has a park cleanup day on the twenty-first. If you'd like to come out and help.
Starts at nine.
It starts at nine, and, and where are you meeting at?
I, go ahead.
I don't know.
I thought, we're just going to meet over at the park, bring your, some tools, gloves.
Come meet the park board members on Friday and, and meet them and they'll tell you where to, uh, meet up because you'll know who they are.
We did, we did post that on the.
You did post that on the city, on the, as well. Um, but yes, please meet the park board members.
And that's the next, uh.
That is the twenty-first, correct, at nine.
So I can't miss the cross.
That is, all right, um, if we have no other business, I would entertain a motion to recess until June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, uh, at six P M.
Let's make a motion, uh, or, well, I guess recess for budget workshop on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at six P M.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Uh, a motion by Kendra, second by Paul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four oh, we are recessed.